How old is she?
Sixteen.
Where's she going?
Evans.
Goes down?
Later.
You got a what?
What time is that clock?
That wet paint.
Five fifty-nine.
We knew it was live, we was trying to broadcast.
Six o'clock.
Breaking your TV up there?
Somebody trying to kill me.
I forgot it, I had it sitting out on my table.
Six o'clock, Mr. Chair.
I'm gonna start using them.
This party started at six.
Six o'clock? Hate to do it. They won't do it over, I guess I need to.
They don't care how long these days. Cause they'll leave after they're issued. They'll leave soon.
They're gonna leave when they want to.
You're saying things.
Ladies and gentlemen, let's call the meeting order if you would rise for prayer and. Mr. Wilder, he leaves some prayers.
I will pray with us. My dear Lord, we want to thank you for a beautiful day, the beautiful weather we've been having. Uh, we thank you for all the many blessings bestowed upon this community, this state, this country of ours. We ask that you look over us this evening, guide us, give us patience, let us be reasonable with our, our neighbors and friends as we discuss these issues. Uh, we ask that you look over our, our local sheriff's office, our first responders, our EMTs, and all those that help keep us safe and protect us in this area. And we ask that you give us all that came tonight, a safe journey home from this meeting. All these things in Jesus' name we ask, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. I'd like to motion for approval of the minutes of the previous meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. I'd like to have a motion for approval of this agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor with your right hands, please. Okay. First item is, uh, Mr. Douglas.
Uh, yes, this is a, uh, conditional use application at six thirty-five River Pines Drive, uh, that we postponed from last meeting. It's a conditional use request for, uh, approval of a, operation of a bed and breakfast at this location. Uh, this shows the location that we're, uh, speaking about, uh, near the end of Mulliken Road, again at six thirty-five River Pines Drive. Uh, this shows the zoning of the area and that with this application, again, it's a conditional use application. So the zoning district, the R-one zoning district assigned to this location actually isn't going to change. They're just seeking approval for conditional use within the R-one zoning district. This is an aerial of the, uh, site. Uh, this is the plat of the River Pines subdivision. Um, something noteworthy is that, uh, you've seen now on the aerials and the illustrations of the map, as well as this plat, that this subdivision is made up by five parcels. The plan as presented abandons the lot lines for those five parcels. Uh, this is the site plan showing the abandonment of those, uh, lot lines, turning the five parcels into one parcel for the development of the, uh, of the, uh, bed and breakfast. Um, the bed and breakfast is limited to six rentable rooms, which is in compliance with code. Uh, additionally, uh, one-off events or conferences or attendance of the, uh, going to the residence for strict use of the, you know, uh, to, you know, buy food or, you know, to receive drinks. All of those things are prohibited within Columbia County code, uh, for bed and breakfast use. Uh, and you've been seeing some concept, uh, elevations for the building, as well as some, uh, concept for the outdoor space on the site presented by the applicant. And, uh, we are showing this slide for the, uh, future development map to, uh, talk about, uh, the density, even if each of the, uh, six rooms, as well as the seventh room on site for the host to live wi- live in were counted. Uh, the entirety of the subdivision is, uh, about fourteen acres, give or take, uh, which would, uh, you know, amount to one dwelling if we counted each room per two acres, which is in compliance with the neighborhood character area of the future development map. So in consideration of all of these things, the county is, uh, the, uh, staff is recommending approval.
Before we continue with this issue, I forgot to read this to everybody, so we'll do it and get back to it. Before we begin, I'd like to take a moment to clarify that planning commissioners are recommended bodies to the Columbia County Board of Commissioners. The decisions made on rezoning and various requests tonight will be forwarded to the Commissioners' final action on July the eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three. You wish to address the Board of Commissioners at their meeting, please see Ms. Stoller to obtain a request to speak for them. Any requests with a public hearing will have a minimum of ten minutes permitted per side for the presentation of opinions, data, and evidence about opponents or opponents of a request. The applicant will be allowed to speak first, and any member of the public may speak after. Either side may cede their time during the hearing if they so desire. Now, the way we do this, if you're recognized, we need you to come to the microphone and state your name and address, and then say whatever it is you prefer to say. Won't have any conversation from the audience itself, so the only way you get to speak is if you come there. I appreciate you helping us out with that. Now, back to the first issue. Is anyone here who apply for this application or who would like to speak? Yes, sir.
My name is Adam Cotter, I live at ten twenty Peninsula Crossing over in Evans, and I am the applicant. That's a pretty good proposal. Um, when we were here two weeks ago, uh, discussing this, the same issue, um, I wasn't anticipating some of the questions that we had been given. And so I appreciate the opportunity to come back and address some of those, and we have some time to think about it. It probably will help y'all to understand, I moved to Evans about two years ago from Atlanta with the idea of finding a nice quiet piece of land on the river where I could retire and spend the rest of my days with my family. What I didn't understand is what it would take to find a nice quiet piece of land on the river. I ended up spying over a hundred and twenty acres of what I learned is some of the more controversial land in Columbia County, uh, to accomplish this. And became probably the only developer in Columbia County who doesn't want to develop land. So we took part of that land, as you are familiar with the Timber Creek neighborhood, and instead of building it all out, we just put half of it, fifty acres, into a neighborhood. We took the other fifty acres and set aside as green space where I'm gonna build my home. Once the wheels were moving forward on that plan, one of my big concerns in building my home was this fourteen acre, um, five neighborhood subdivision that I saw going in next to it. And that concerned me. I didn't know what kind of houses were gonna be built there, I didn't know what the neighbor, the characteristics of the neighborhood was gonna be. So when the land was sitting there available for a while, I just went ahead and bought it. So I could make sure that it'd be in keeping with my desires, have a nice quiet place to retire. Um, and then when thinking about what to do with this land, um, with my family, I said, well, instead of building five homes there, we'll just add one private residence where my son and his daughter, our son and his wife, uh, will live there, um, with their little baby. And then they can, under the R-one zoning, offer bed and breakfast. And I think there's been some misunderstanding of what exactly bed and breakfast is. Um, it's been told that we're trying to build a mini hotel. What we're building is a private residence, um, where people are able to rent out rooms. Maybe worth noting that right now, there are over a thousand Airbnbs in Columbia County, over three hundred plus VRBOs, and exactly one legitimate bed and breakfast in the entire county. We're trying to add a second one. Instead of saying, hey, what the heck, we'll just, you know, do an Airbnb here or something, we're trying to come in and say, look, we want to do this the right way, with the right permit, because we're interested in protecting this area. When we developed Timber Creek, you know, the neighborhood next door, we had some neighbors who were upset about, you know, turning any green space into development. But the neighborhood was gonna get developed by somebody anyway. Were the guys coming in saying, we don't want five houses next door to me, we don't want all this stuff. What I want is a private residence where my son can live, and yeah, he can help make a living by renting out some of the rooms. Um, it's not a restaurant, it's breakfast. We don't have food trucks coming in, it's, you know, going down to the local farmer's market and buying breakfast foods. Um, there's concerns about traffic. As noted in the staff report, we're actually reducing the traffic in the area, we're adding to the green space. And bed and breakfast is typically, if you go back to the studies, the average age of a person going to a bed and breakfast is fifty point three years. This is not, you know, families coming, this is not young kids coming or having big parties. This is typically older people who have the money to come, who are looking for a weekend getaway. Cause right now, if you live in Columbia County and you want to go to a romantic weekend getaway, you're driving up to the mountains, you're driving to Myrtle Beach, you're driving down to Florida. How cool would it be to have a place where you can drive ten minutes and be right on the river and have a quiet room and get away from the kids? Get away from, you know, the people who are, be alone and remember why you got married in the first place. That's what we're proposing here, not a mini hotel, as it was said last time, or any other kind of wild event. A private residence, which is why it's under R-one, where you can rent out rooms legitimately, as opposed to just doing an Airbnb where we don't have to, you know, be here at all. Controlled by the rules of the county, because we do have a permit, it should fit nice and quiet, because that's what I want next to me, not a party place.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Is anyone here who would like to speak against this issue? Yes, sir.
Ford Slisth, thirty-nine thirty-nine Mulliken Road. I'd like to go over a few things I mentioned last time. You can call it a bread and breakfast, that sounds good, but it's a mini hotel. I live just steps away from it. Road is a mile and a half road, a dead end road. Had two fatalities on that road. People get confused from, they leave the service station up there, they come down Mulliken Road fifty-five miles an hour. Had several wrecks, I live at the very end. Traffic is bad, not too concerned about the traffic. But I am concerned about a, technically a commercial property being put in the middle of a residential area. And we've got homes all around there, and as Mr. Cotter alluded to, there's gonna be another subdivision, there's already six subdivisions, there will be seven subdivisions coming off of Mulliken Road, dumping into Mulliken Road. If you count Con Drive, that's eight subdivisions, because in all of it, there's no outlet. If you go in Mulliken Road, you gotta turn around at my house and come back out. And there's no sidewalk on the south side where he proposes to build his bed and breakfast. We had a lady get run over and killed out there, because she couldn't, she wasn't on a sidewalk, that's several years ago. But, and also two schools that dump onto Mulliken Road. I just think it's a terrible precedent to set to put a commercial property in the middle of a neighborhood where houses are built. And I'd leave you with this, I'd like for you gentlemen, before y'all vote, you think about this, would you like this thing next to your house? Six, seven bedroom, commercial property. Call it a bed and breakfast, that sounds good, but it's rented rooms, so in essence, it's a hotel. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else here that would like to speak against this issue? Any other questions? Any comments? I'd like to have a motion to accept or deny this request.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve file RZ twenty-three dash zero six dash zero two, conditional use, bed and breakfast at six thirty-five River Pines Drive.
Have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor of this motion, signify by raising your right hand. All opposed? This, uh, issue fails on a vote of three to two.
Mr. Chairman, just to re- clarify, that's a recommendation.
Yes, sir.
No, I'm sorry. Uh, yeah, I'm sorry, it's a, but it's a condition. So it does fail, you're right, sorry. Thinking of the next item. Or, um, next vote here.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is, uh, massage operator's license, Mr. Butler.
Lieutenant Sheriff's Request for Massage Operator's License for Prospering in Wellness LLC, DBA Elements Massage, located at nine thirty-five Ronald Reagan Drive, Suite one oh three. Applicant is Brent Hammond, uh, is for onsite services only, uh, they meet all the requirements, the ordinance, the staff recommends approval.
Anyone here that would like to speak on behalf of this issue? Anyone opposed? Have a motion to accept or deny?
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the massage operator, massage operator's license for Prospering in Wellness LLC, DBA Elements Massage Evans, to provide massage therapy at nine thirty-five Ronald Reagan Drive, Suite one zero three.
Second.
All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Next item on the agenda is Ms. Montgomery's.
Yes, sir, this is a provisional home occupation for CS Customs located at thirty-five oh two Ray Owens Road for a proposed woodworking business. This is the location of the property on the west side of Ray Owens Road and currently zoned RA, residential agricultural, as are all of the surrounding properties. This shows the aerial of the site. And the proposal is, uh, to use the existing shop on the property, which is approximately seven hundred square feet, uh, for a woodworking business that would specialize in custom furniture, built-in cabinetry, wood signs, and other miscellaneous woodwork. Um, all of the wood for the projects is stored in the garage, and there is no outdoor storage associated with the business. The finished products would be either delivered or shipped to the customers, there'd be no customers coming to the site, no additional traffic to the property. Um, scrap material would be taken to the landfill either by the applicant or as part of their normal residential trash pickup. Um, essentially, the request is to allow use of this detached building for this business. Um, this is a rural area of the county, uh, and it's certainly not unusual for detached buildings to be used for projects like this. Uh, in this case, since it's a business, they do need approval for it. Um, since none of the storage or work is conducted outside, and there's no additional traffic with this business, um, staff sees no concerns with the request and is recommending approval.
Anyone here who would like to speak on behalf of this issue? Anyone like to speak opposed to it? Have a motion to accept or deny?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the provisional occu- home occupation, CS Customs, thirty-five oh two Ray Owens Road.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by raising your right hands. Information only. Montgomery.
Yes, sir, this was a temporary use authorization at thirty-five oh eight Washington Road for a temporary sales office during a building remodel. Uh, this property is currently zone C-two, general commercial, and is an existing car dealership. They are getting ready to remodel the building, um, we saw the variation for them fairly, fairly recently, um, shows the aerial with the existing building on the site. And essentially, they're going to place three, uh, trailers in the parking lot to use as the sales office during construction on the building. Um, that was approved back on June twenty-third, and again, this was for information only.
Okay. Next item is White Oak Road subdivision, Montgomery.
Yes, sir, this is the preliminary plat for the White Oak Road subdivision located off White Oak Road. This shows the location of the property on the north side of White Oak Road and currently zoned RA, residential agricultural. Uh, the concept plan for this was approved, uh, on May eighteenth, um, and the preliminary plat is in compliance with that approved conceptual plan. Uh, the proposed development includes construction of a private gravel road, uh, to serve ten, uh, single-family residential lots with a minimum lot size of ten acres. Uh, the average lot size is ten point four acres in the subdivision. The required setbacks are seventy-five feet from the center line of the private road, ten feet from the side property lines, and twenty-five feet from the rear property lines. Uh, they do have buffers required, even though everything that, around them is RA, as they do have a fifty-foot buffer required on White Oak Road, as well as twenty-five-foot buffers around the perimeter of the development. And staff is recommending approval of the preliminary plat, subject to addressing all of the interdepartmental review comments.
Anyone here would like to speak on behalf of this issue? Anyone like to speak against it? Like a motion to accept or deny?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the preliminary plat for White Oak Road subdivision off White Oak Road.
All in favor, signify by raising your right hands. Next one is Ms. Montgomery with Misty Meadows Phase One.
Yes, sir, this is the final plat for Phase One of Misty Meadows located off William Few Parkway. This shows the location of the property on the west side of William Few Parkway and currently zoned PRD, planned residential development. Uh, that zoning was originally approved in two thousand nineteen, and we did see a major revision, um, earlier this year, uh, to the building setbacks. This shows the Phase One final plat, uh, this section includes seventy-one single-family residential lots with a minimum lot size of five thousand square feet, and an average lot size of five thousand nine hundred and fourteen square feet. Uh, per that re- revision earlier this year, the front setbacks are a minimum of forty feet from the center line of the road, or fifteen feet from the front property line. Side setbacks are five feet on one side and ten feet on the other, and they are shown on the final plat, which side is which, and they're ten feet from, uh, the rear property line. Uh, per the narrative, the AC units will not be located on the side of the lot with the five-foot setback, and this is also noted on the final plat. The sidewalks and street trees are provided on both sides of the road, and seven point six one acres of open spaces provided in this section. Uh, this does include the fifty-foot buffer around the perimeter of the site, uh, which does include a nature trail that winds through that. And staff, this is the existing site. And staff is recommending approval.
Anyone here would like to speak on behalf of Mr. Madison? Anyone like to speak opposed to it? Like a motion to accept or deny Misty Meadows?
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the final plat for Misty Meadows Phase One off William Few Parkway.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Okay, now we're open for the public hearings, and first item is Mr. Butler.
Lieutenant Sheriff's Request for rezoning at five eight six three Washington Road, little portion of property, zero point five nine acres, I have a total of a hundred fifty point two acres, uh, from M-two to CC Community Commercial for an existing restaurant. There's a location on the property, we're dealing with this little corner up here. And again, the current zoning, again, the current zoning, current zoning is M-two, you have some CC around it, some, uh, RA's to the north, and then some C-two and RA across, uh, Washington Road and Cobham Road and Scotts Ferry. There's aerial view of the site again, dealing with this area here. And is it the existing site, we'll be seeing some variances on the next application, kind of in regards to the sign and also the parking that you see here. There's a plat of the property. And the overall zoning plan, so, so the reason that both the requests for the rezoning and the variance are coming before y'all tonight, uh, this used to be Maryland Fried Chicken, um, it was there for quite a while, um, then it became vacant, it was vacant for more than a year. And once that happens, under our code, you have to address all non-conformities on the site, which includes some things that we're talking about the next application. Um, also, as, as we found out, when we were, when we were, when we were reviewing it, that the, uh, restaurant itself is actually on the property zoned M-two, um, that is not permitted, so we're having to rezone this piece of property here, uh, to bring in the compliance. Uh, this will be added into this one point five five acres here, make a total of two point one four acres overall. Uh, also, no, no changes to the exterior of the, of the site itself, uh, with the request, um, so it's gonna basically look as is right now on the building side. In terms of future developments in a rural community crossroads, uh, Pollard's Corner specifically, this area is supposed to have uses that are, basically what's already there, uh, you know, you have the, uh, convenience store across the street, a restaurant, uh, you could have, due to its location, uh, potentially some things to deal with the lake, like perhaps boat storage, that sort of thing. Uh, so in terms of the, the zoning itself, uh, totally meets, uh, the visual, visual twenty thirty-five future development map, uh, we do have a condition with it, uh, requires them to give us, or record a plat within ninety days of approval by the Board of Commissioners, oh, excuse me, our recommended approval with a condition. Um, and again, the copy of that plat will be revised to the planning department after recording, that includes staff recommendations.
Is anyone here would like to speak on behalf of this issue? Anyone opposed to it? Any comments or questions?
Chairman, I make a motion to recommend approval of file RZ twenty-three four point five nine acre property at fifty-eight six, Washington Road from M-two to.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by raising your right hands. None opposed? Okay, next item is Mr. Butler.
Lieutenant Sheriff's is, uh, basically the same property, but does include two others, uh, this is all six thousand eight Clarksville Road off Washington Road, and again, the five eight three six Washington Road dealt with before. Uh, this is a total of three point eight three acres overall, dealing with the zoning of CC and M-two, uh, includes the restaurant we just talked about, and again, a portion of lumber company property. Looking at variances, Unit H one thirty-three parking, one thirty-five signs, one thirty-nine buffers and screening, uh, to allow alternative material for parking, to allow existing sign remain, also to revise buffers. There's a location, we're dealing now with that corner here, but also these two properties that are adjacent to it. Again, current zoning, again, you have the two that are CC than the M-two that we, that we just dealt with before. There's aerial view of the property. Existing site. And existing parking, again, let me go back to the existing site photo real quick, sorry about that. So the sign, the, is actually on an adjacent piece of property, it's also been abandoned for more than a year, so it is non-conforming. Uh, so in order for it to stay there, we have to get a variance, uh, for that to, to remain. Um, they do plan to paint this sign and also reface it, uh, for the new business, um, it's been there for a while. Um, and the thing is, is you probably couldn't tell without knowing there about the, the division of the land out there that is actually on a separate piece of property. Um, so again, not really any concerns there. Uh, in terms of the parking, uh, you can see in this photo, you have some asphalt, you have some gravel, I believe there's even some concrete out there. Uh, parking is supposed to be paved under Columbia County code. Um, however, um, again, we're kind of dealing with a rural area, um, this is one of the things that we have allowed in the past, we have kind of said, you know, look, the rural area, it's, it's kind of the feel and character of that, and kind of keeping that in place, something that can be, you know, allowed in certain situations. We do have a condition, I'll kind of speak to on the end of this, that doesn't basically keep it there in perpetuity, um, but it is something, uh, that is part of the request. And here's, here's how's the plat of the property, the other plat, again, a very old one on this one. And again, going, going back on the, the zoning plan itself, we already talked about the gravel parking and the sign with the photos there. Uh, the other thing is that when you have CC next to M-two, which would be this property here, uh, you do have a buffer, twenty-foot buffer in between the two, um, and it doesn't, it doesn't include a structural component to that, which will be a fence, that sort of thing. Um, the applicant is intending to keep all of the trees there, um, but again, prying a fence for this doesn't make a lot of sense in this situation, they're basically buffering from themselves, so they have requested to remove the fence requirement, uh, from those, uh, from that requirement as well. Again, there is a condition, uh, variances will require, our, the recommendation is to approve of the condition, uh, variances will expire if any of the conditions of Section Ninety-H one thirty-two, non-conform uses of land and structures of Columbia Co- of Columbia County Code are met. What this does is it basically says, we're gonna let you keep this as it is, but if you make any changes that are under that code would trigger non-conforming requirements, again, we'll have to then come back and either u- update the site itself or apply for another variance. Uh, the applicant has indicated that they do intend to do a lot more work in this area in the next five to ten years, um, so it's likely that they will come back and probably develop this with probably parking and the normal things that you would see perhaps, that includes staff recommendation.
Anyone here would like to step forward about these variances? Anyone opposed to them? Like a motion to approve or deny?
Chairman, I make a motion to recommend approval with condition, file VA twenty-three dash zero six, zero six, variances to bed a natural rather than structural buffer and to permit full sign, gravel parking to remain for properties at fifty-six Washington Road, thousand eight Clarksville Road, off Washington Road.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. None opposed? Okay, the next item is Mr. Douglas.
Uh, yes, sir, this is a rezoning application at, uh, one seventy South Bel Air Road. Uh, rezoning from R-two, single-family residential zoning to CC community commercial zoning, uh, for a provo- proposed, uh, convenience store with fuel pumps. Uh, this shows the location of the property, uh, along South Bel Air Road, uh, at the end of Oakley Perkel Road and in front of the, uh, Fox Run subdivision. Um, the surrounding zonings to this property are important to note, uh, for this application, including those professionally zoned across the street, highlighted in. highlighted in blue there, as well as obviously the residential properties at both the rear and the north of this property and the commercial zoning south of the property along South Bel Air Road, which are again, commercial in nature, as well as an S one for a development of a self-storage facility that hasn't begun development yet. This is an aerial of the property. This is the existing site. This is the plat for the property. And then this is the proposed concept plan for the site. It shows the development again of the gas station here in the southeastern section of the property. As well additionally, again, we wanted to note earlier the residential properties to the east and north of this property. On this plan, the kind of hatched area along those property lines, both here and here, denotes a structural buffer that will be code compliant. It'll be thirty feet wide with, which includes natural plantings and an opaque fencing element to be code compliant. It also shown here on the plan is a connector from the intersection of Oakley-Percle Road and South Bel Air Road to Oakley-Percle Extension, Oakley-Percle Road Extension in the Fox Run subdivision. That the development of the fourth leg of this intersection, as well as the connector traffic, our traffic engineering department has a couple of conditions that speak to that that I'll cover here at the end of the presentation. But again, this application is for community commercial zoning and a convenience store with fuel pumps isn't allowed use in that zoning. This is a slide showing the future development map, and although this property is shown to be in the neighborhood character area, we have South Bel Air Road here highlighted as an established professional corridor, which is established by the Future Development Plan Vision Twenty Thirty-five for the county. Uses that are allowed along that professional corridor largely professional in nature. However, one use, sort of umbrella that's named in that description is community commercial development, which again, this application is for community commercial zoning District CC. And in that zoning district, convenience store with fuel pumps is a named use for that professional corridor on the future development map. Again, the conditions affiliated with this application ensure that the development of that connecting leg for the intersection to the subdivision at the rear, all financing for that is going to be provided by the developer of this site. Additionally, the connector will be developed up to the standards as a collector road for the per-county standards, both, you know, which means in width and road quality. Those are going to be the standards for the road situation, and so considering all of this, staff is recommending approval for this application with these conditions.
Anyone here who would like to step forward and represent this issue? If you would state your name and address, please.
Cody Rogers, EMC Engineering, twelve eleven Merchant Way, Statesboro, Georgia.
Daniel Beniz Trailel, Real Estate Development Manager for Parker's Kitchen, seventeen West McDonough Street, Savannah, Georgia.
Excuse me. We are proposing a fifty-one hundred square foot convenience store. As Mr. Douglas went over, we know it's right there at the neighborhood, and we did expect a little bit of feedback from the community, so we're interested to hear what that community and subdivision has to say tonight. I think several representatives from that community are here tonight. As Mr. Douglas went over, the connection to Oakley-Percle, I'm sorry, the extension of Oakley-Percle to Fox Run was not originally in our concept plan, but we met with GDOT and with Columbia County for a pre-app, and both departments, both the Traffic Department from Columbia County and GDOT required that we show that connection to serve that subdivision and add another access point, because there is only, to my understanding, one access point from that subdivision to South Bel Air, and I do not believe it's signalized, but I may be wrong about that if it is.
Do you have any comments, sir?
Not at this time. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Don't have any questions? Thank you. Okay, let's do this in an orderly fashion. The first person opposed that would like to step to the microphone, raise your hand, please. Okay? Come ahead. Yes, sir?
Good evening. My name is Edward Kensinger. I reside at six sixty Clinton Way West, which is in Fox Run subdivision, and it's about a block from where the proposed extension of Oakley-Percle will come in to meet Clinton Way West. Looking at the plans, we can see that this is going to increase the traffic in our neighborhood significantly. Clinton Way West is already a raceway. We have people coming out of Spring Lakes that feed our communities coming up from Columbia Road, and they blast over and Bel Air Road to head over towards this area of town. Also, anytime you put in a convenience store, there's the associated crime that comes with it. That it's going to be an extended hours facility, and the crime that comes with it, we already have gas stations located within a half a mile. There's not a need for another gas station on Bel Air Road. I hate to see Bel Air Road being turned into the Tobacco Road of Richmond County. That's a track it's taking right now. Another issue is that you look at this proposed installation here, and the distance from those gas tanks down to the residential community is so close. The fumes from those fuel tanks are going to be a concern for any family who's trying to raise children. The benzene that comes out of refueling those tanks, it's a consideration. And note the plat of that land, it goes into a valley. That's a downhill. And so all that, those fumes and everything are going to go flowing down that lane, down into the valley, at the bottom of Clinton Way West. And let's see, what else I write down? Sorry. Oh, and in addition, I honestly think that once this is opened up, once you, one thing nice about a Fox Run subdivision is it is kind of isolated. There is not a lot of access to it, and that keeps down the traffic. You open it up like that, and we're going to have so much traffic coming through. It's just going to change the character of the neighborhood completely. And quite frankly, it's going to reduce the value of our homes. So if there's going to be some kind of compensation for the homeowners, that's something that can be discussed also.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay. Okay, who's next? Yes, sir?
Denise Badney, four one two five Meriden Drive.
Linda Blackstock, six thirty Meriden Court.
Okay.
One of the problems that we see with this is that you're also, it looks like from this, that Hickory Drive is going to be impacted with this. It looks like there's two ways. Hickory Drive as well, so there's another access point from what we can tell.
And that's not really part of Fox Run subdivision, but before you get actually into our isolated.
Another thing is the light, the lights and the traffic, the trucks, the gas tankers coming in to our, basically into our subdivision to fill in the middle of the night. We're already dealing with that with Walmart. Walmart made lots of promises when they proposed their buildings, and a lot of those didn't happen. All those houses on Matheny Cut, Walmart's right in their backyard, right there. And so a lot gun-shy about what's going to happen with this.
Also, there's the problem, my biggest problem is it's already noisy. We, it's hard to sleep just with the noise from the professional thruway that, which is Bel Air Road. Don't, not even counting having a convenience store there. Now, I've seen the pictures of these Parker kitchens, and they're very nice, but it's taking, it's taking any value that our property will have and reducing it by so much because we're just going to, where this, where Oakley-Percle will be cutting through into this subdivision, already we see people cutting through other parts, and I'm, I'm at, I do this too, so I'm to blame for this too, to keep from going out onto Bel Air Road. Holly Road right now is the only way really, the closest way out of our subdivision, and you can't turn left out of our subdivision. Not on Bel Air Road. It's ridiculous. And there's no way that we could have a light because Oakley-Percle has the light right down here. You add this, we'll just have all the, all the traffic that doesn't need to be coming through a residential area coming through there. When they, and this is one of the things my husband mentioned, the dumpster issues, it's the loudest thing that you can possibly imagine. All the noise and the people, if this is a twenty-four hour business, there's noise. There's going to be noise twenty-four hours a day, and it might not necessarily be the kind of people that we would like coming into our residential neighborhood.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'll have to say.
Okay, who's next? If you'd raise your hand. Yes, sir?
Bear with me. I wasn't planning on doing this. My name's LL Zep. I live at one fifty-six Hickory Drive South. My wife and myself, we've been there twenty-three years. And during that time, probably seen at least fifteen, twenty thousand cars cutting over from Columbia Road to Bel Air or vice versa. And we happen to live on a corner, so sometimes at twenty-five mile an hour zone, they come across a speed bump during about sixty. But that's another issue. The thing that is true, has been for years. All times of day, off and on, sometimes at night, especially if it's raining, sirens coming and going, whether it's police, ambulance, fire truck off Oakley-Percle. We live a block off. They may as well be in the bedroom with us. And that's just been going on a long time. Something I'm very concerned about, and you'll have to bear with me because I sometimes don't understand everything. The exits for this gas convenience store combo, where are they supposed to be?
About where it comes to Bel Air Road?
The entrance and the exit, where is it supposed to be? Because I've seen the two homes that are over around on Oakley-Percle Extension, and one of the things I was really curious about, are they going to try to open up traffic in that little circle that's got two houses on it? Then you've got Clinton Way there. These are established neighborhoods.
Mr. Butler can answer that for you.
Sure. So again, they're showing a connection going into Oakley-Percle Road Extension, right there. So I mean, yeah, it's going to go into that route.
They're going to open Oakley-Percle Extension up?
Yes.
That is not a good idea. It's already.
If you would, please let him speak.
I follow this. But, but some of this is just common sense commission. And coming in then, and just, you know, the area is established, has been for years. You're going to open up more traffic that's already too heavy, especially on Bel Air Road. Go down Bel Air Road from three to six. You've got a three-hour span there. Picture's worth a thousand words. And I could say more because I've been over there twenty-three years, but I think I've said enough.
Thank you for coming up.
Thank you for listening.
Who else would like to speak? Back. Oh, wait a minute.
Hi, I'm Monique Yancy at four one two seven Meriden Drive. I am in the midst of the Oakley-Percle Extension and where you want to open up. Just like the previous neighbor said, the traffic is just absolutely horrendous. Our street is like a racetrack. They've run up and down the street already. And I actually counted the gas stations. We have eight already. Starting at the top of Bel Air Road over on the other side of I twenty, you have the Exxon, the Pallid, the Valero. Then you have the empty gas station here, then you're followed by a Sprint here on the corner of Bel Air and Willer Road along, another one across the street. Then you have Walmart. With this one, it would be a total of nine on one stretch down the same side. Doesn't make any sense. And I am definitely opposed to it, and I'm with everybody else.
Thank you. Okay, now we're, it's getting repetitive speaking of this. I appreciate every one of you coming up, but we're talking about the same thing over and over, and we do get the picture, I promise you. This will be the last one. Come on forward.
Hi, we live on forty-one thirty-one.
Your name, please.
Oh, sorry, Monique. We live on forty-one thirty-one Meriden Drive. We are essentially the new kids on the block. However, the reason why we chose this neighborhood, my husband and I threw a FaceTime showing, was because of how peaceful the neighborhood was. We don't have children, however, we have dogs, so we are walking our dogs at all times of the day. It is already chaotic enough to dodge the cars that are rolling right by, but my biggest concern is the crime, the people, but I'm a dog walker. I love to walk my dogs. I want to feel safe in our neighborhood.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes, sir. This is the last one now.
I'd just like to offer some additional commentary. I've heard the concerns from the residents, and we certainly want to take heed to those concerns. I'd just like to say that we are looking forward to being a part of this community. Over the course of the next five years, we intend to build twenty to twenty-five convenience stores in the Augusta, Columbia County market. We've worked really hard to identify locations that's going to not only serve us, but also serve the community. This location is no exception. When it comes to the connection that we're looking to make to Oakley-Percle, as our engineer indicated, that was recommended or even required by GDOT and the county. If that's something that the residents do not want, and the county doesn't want that connection to be made, we certainly be willing to go back to GDOT and say, hey, look, the community doesn't want this connection, and we're okay not making that road connection. In looking at it on its face, we think it's going to be of service to the community. In our minds, no one's going to cut through the community. That's a very, very large subdivision behind our site, and.
Wait, wait now. Let him have his say.
Which is a, which is a good point. If that's happening already, it's likely residents, maybe within your subdivisions, that's doing the speeding. It's not, that's not a condition that's going to be created by our store going there. But again, if it's a connection that the county does not want, or the community does not want, we'd be willing to scratch that from our development plans.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. We've cut it off then. Everybody's had his say, and we've heard both sides. Everybody's had an opportunity. Now's the time to vote. If you would, please. I need to have a motion to accept or deny this issue.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to recommend disapproval of file RZ twenty-three dash zero six dash zero five, rezoning from R dash two to C dash C at one seventy South Bel Air Road.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Now.
That's voted down. Ladies and gentlemen, if you would, please, be respectful of everything we're attempting to do. It was voted down. Down. Any of you at this time that were here for this would like to leave, we'd be glad to wait two or three minutes to let you leave.
Al, we, we still have the variance.
Yeah, we're gonna do it.
Companion to this. It's companion to the rezoning.
I know. We're gonna do it. I'm just-
Sir?
Right quick.
One second. Time's up.
I remember you. I remember you. I'm doing good. How about you?
How you doing?
Yeah, I'm trying. I'm trying.
They gotta do all that to, to, they can't touch it at all. They can mark, they can survey. That pretty picture, yeah, that pretty picture you saw, that's how they go about that.
That's all right. That's all right. You spoke very well when you were there. Thank you for coming. Okay, last call to meeting back to order, please. The next item is a variance on that same issue, Mr. Douglas.
Uh, yes, like you said, this is a companion variance to the rezoning application we just reviewed. This variance application is seeking approval for a, a variance to Section 90-147 use provisions to allow the proposed convenience store with fuel pumps to operate 24 hours a day as opposed to 6:00 AM to 11:00 PM per code, county code. Uh, this is the location of the site again, at the end of Oakley-Percle Road, on South Bel Air Road. This is the zoning map. This is an aerial of the property. This is the plat for the property. Uh, and again, this is the site plan, and again, we want to emphasize the fact that with the 24-hour application, the big concern is, I guess, the light and noise impact to neighboring residential properties. Um, and so we want to reemphasize the fact that at this development, these two lot lines, post code-compliant structural buffers, again, with natural plannings and an opaque fencing element as well, 30 feet wide, abutting all lot lines that abut residential properties. Um, staff has also included a condition to require a photometric plan be included with the development plan through the plan review process of the development of this site. Uh, so when they submit their plans for final approval by the county, during that review process, they would also need to include that photometric plan that would show the impact of light at property lines and specifically ones that neighbor residential properties to help ensure that we're doing everything possible to mitigate any negative effects to neighboring properties. And with that condition in place, staff is recommending approval of this application.
Anyone would like to speak for this issue?
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I'm Daniel Ben Israel, real estate development manager for Drayton Parker Companies and Parker's Kitchen. This application was attached to the previous application that you heard. However, I do understand that the previous recommendation was for disapproval, but now has to be heard before the county commissioners. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So, we would like to proceed with, with this application. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have, but our stores typically operate 24 hours a day. Um, and most of our locations, I think, out of the 75 operating locations we currently have, there may be one or two locations that do not operate 24 hours a day.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
I've got some questions. Um, the, the crime issue keeps coming up from some of the, the neighbors in the community, and I'm kinda curious, do you have statistics on that? My, my business is located right next to a Circle K that's open 24 hours. I've been there 13 years, and I've, can count the times on one hand the police have been-
Sure.
I was kinda curious if, if, maybe it's Parker's Kitchen draws crime?
No, I, I'd beg to-
On there?
I mean, we're, we're no different than any other commercial establishment. Crime occurs everywhere. Um, and so I don't think you can pin criminal activity on any particular land use. Obviously, it would tend to happen more at commercial establishments than at other establishments, say offices and things of that nature. But, um, we're certainly not an anomaly when it comes to criminal activity occurring. It happens, unfortunately. Um, I don't have any numbers to say how many times we are visited by-
But it's relative to the norm in the area.
Yeah.
It would be the, okay.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Make a motion on this.
Oh, we've got others.
Yeah.
I'm Beth Connel. I live at 2538 Falling Branch Lane in Evans. Um, I intend to speak later about an ordinance request that comes up on the end of the agenda, but I would respectfully like to request, since the original rezoning was denied, if, that the recommendation be also to disapprove this one. Um, if this, if the applicant, Parker, is nuanced to come back later on, they should have to come back for this request to do 24/7 operation. Um, these ordinance or, a variance shouldn't be given, especially if the rezoning was disapproved. That's my request. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve or disapprove this issue.
Chairman, I make a motion to recommend disapproval of file variant VA 23-06-07 permitting 24-hour operation of a proposed convenience store at 170 South Bel Air Road.
Second.
All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Okay, the next item is Mr. Butler.
Mr. Sheriff, it's a request for a major PUD revision at 1,000 Westlake Commons Drive, which is currently zone, planning and development. This revision is to modify the site layout and uses on the property. This is the current location of the property. You know, Westlake, Westlake Commons Road, our drive in front of, um, Westlake, uh, neighborhood. This is current zoning, getting everything around in zone, planning and development. This is all Westlake over here. Uh, this is the retirement, or the, um, excuse me, the, uh, I can't remember what, what it's called, but the, the memory care facility here. Across the street, again, is more PUD for, that's what it is, but across the street is the Forest Creek Development. And then you have Plant, uh, P1 and R2 on the other side of that. Here's a overview of the property. Again, it's, it's currently under development. We have an older arrow in this situation. Existing site, again, showing the, the property currently under development. The also existing site there as well. And the plan of the property, again, dealing with this one here, this one's not included in the request at all. So, again, kinda going through a history of kinda what happened on the property. So, back in the 80s, uh, this was originally zoned for a fairly large commercial development. Um, it kinda sat there for a while, basically over 30 years. Uh, then back in 2021, or, excuse me, yeah, 2021, uh, you had the plan that has, that is currently adopted on the site itself. Again, changes it more to, um, not, not necessarily mixed use, but a more urban style development. You know, you have outdoor spaces, you have, um, on this one at least, you had food trucks. Um, again, kind of a more unique layout, also more of what, what we like seeing in Columbia County. So, the request before you this evening is for a slight increase in the overall square footage, about 7,000 square feet, adding in a massage use back here, and also allowing for some outdoor fitness activities in this area over here with the, the gym that's proposed here. Uh, there was a pedestrian connection that was shown back here that we've kinda read out, essentially. That has been removed from the request. Uh, we did speak with Westlake Property Owners Association. It does have some control over uses within the site. Um, they had not had any conversations about the pedestrian connections. Has been removed. Uh, may come up in the future, but again, it's, it's not included with the request. That, that shows you kinda the overall view of what's changing on the site itself. Um, you also have, again, comparison of the, of the approved versus current, again, about 7,000 square feet increase. Um, that is more shown on this building here comparatively. Um, and also, this one up here has a slight increase as well. Again, the overall development plan, showing what's on the front, and then the building renderings, which have already been approved previously. Uh, one of the other things that's being changed is the sign and mural concept on the property. Um, instead of doing a master's sign plan with, with the original PUD, um, it kinda had a, the beginnings of a, a sign plan kinda built into the planning and development. Um, it's not really separate from anything. Um, there's a slight revision with that. Um, they're putting mural niches that are gonna face, uh, and again, the elevations are not being approved or anything with this. This is just a little straight, the overall signage. Uh, you do have the principal signage there, uh, these mural niches that are gonna face towards the prompt care, and the mural wall in the back kinda facing inward to the site. Uh, future development map is on the professional corridor. Again, kinda what, we already heard some of kinda what those entail. Uh, primary future uses do include, uh, CC is kinda the upper limit, then also C1's below that, P1, your professional, your small neighborhood commercial type uses. Uh, this development actually has C1 as the overall uses. Again, with the massage being a conditional use in all commercial districts, um, and also the, uh, actually the outdoor component of the fitness facility is also a conditional use, um, within, or actually is not included in the C1. Uh, so again, it's still maintaining that more C1 feel. Uh, so it is meeting the intent of that professional corridor, uh, with the changes. Also meeting in terms of, uh, the overall design of everything with, with this corridor as well, uh, it still meets the intent of Vision 2035. Overall, staff does recommend approval of the request. We have provided a condition that previously adopted conditions still apply with the 2021, uh, application. That includes things such as, um, review of a, a, um, a, a lighting plan. Um, there are still, that is still in place. That's not happening, and I'll go ahead and tell you, because again, it is more for the properties on the back of the site. Um, those have not been developed yet, that, so we have not seen a photometric at this point. And all those conditions are recommended to remain in place. That includes staff recommendation.
Anyone here that would like to step forward recommending this issue? I want whoever it is that wants to present this issue to us, I'd like to hear from them.
Uh, my name is Rafi Bisali. I live at 3808 Inverness Way. Um, I'm just here to answer questions. It's pretty similar to 2021, uh, so I can let whoever wants to speak and then address those concerns. The, the actual massage parlor is, is more of a medical facial use. They have an existing business in Surrey Center. The owner's a resident of Westlake and is a, established use. So, I don't even think it meets the definition of massage parlor, but that's up to other people to decide.
Questions, anybody? Thanks, sir. Now, anyone here is opposed to this issue? Can
My name's Mahim Janovic, 3713 Westlake Drive. I've been, uh, at these meetings and the Columbia County Commission meetings since this development was proposed. 30-year resident of Westlake, also six years on the board when this all was being developed. Three, uh, first of all, thank you, Will. I had, I had submitted some earlier questions, and they were promptly answered. Three main, four main concerns. There is a land use document attached to this that's recorded with Columbia County. Uh, Will has the specifics on it. It's 11648, pages 14-35. It's a declaration of easements, covenants, and restrictions. Okay? First of all, on 8.11, page 11, it clearly states, clearly, no massage parlors. We can call it a lot of different names, but at the end of the day, if they offer massages, it probably falls under the definition of massage parlor. This was built into the easement restrictions when this land was developed. Number two, stormwater drainage. This is also addressed in the document, 7.22, page 10. The developer is now asking for additional building, as Will mentioned, 7,000 square feet, an increase in the number of parking spaces, and a decrease in the green space concept that was brought to y'all originally. This has been a hot issue because of the Reed Creek situation for the last 30 years. What is also unique about this is this five-acre site has no retention whatsoever of stormwater. Based on the increase in building size, based on the increase in parking size, based on the reduction in green space, I have asked Columbia County Engineering to recalculate the stormwater discharge, because an agreement on this land is we're at 10% above Columbia County restrictions with respect to stormwater. We have not received that yet. Uh, this, the request was submitted to Will and Kyle, Director of Engineering. Number three, building improvements. There is a signage policy in Columbia County. In this same document, it is very clear that there will be no signage painted on the surface of any building, and there is also a lot of, um, comments in this easement notice, in this declaration of easements, with respect to the placement of signs and the height of the signs above the structures. So, I'm asking that that be reviewed again, that we're in compliance with that. The last thing is, even though the gated, uh, request, the pedestrian access, has been pulled by the developer, I just want to go on record. Westlake has been there since 65. We're one of the premier communities because of our gated approach. Opening it up to pedestrian access just defeats the entire purpose of the Westlake subdivision. In addition, golf carts. There will be no return entry for golf carts on Inverness Way. This has been discussed for years with the developers. When University Hospital built a prompt care, the previous developer who wanted to come in, and the current developer. So, I just want to go on record, no to the pedestrian access gate, and no to any golf carts coming back off this development and trying to make a left in front of our guardhouse to go back into Westlake. It is a security concern, but most of all, it is a major traffic issue at that gate. That is our primary gate, heavy, heavy flow, and I wish I could tell you, everybody stops at the three stop signs, but they don't. So, it would be a risk to pedestrians on golf carts. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Okay.
Good afternoon. James Oster, 3701 Westlake Drive. Um, my concern is actually relating to the outdoor workout facilities. On that plot, it does not look like that's a substantial area as indicated to facilitate outside workouts. So, my concern is that you'll have spillover from that location into adjoining areas of this development, which can lend itself to safety concerns, uh, within the whole development. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Linda Townsend, uh, 602 Pebble Beach Court. I've been a resident of Westlake's 41 years. Raised two children there and have three grandchildren that come to see me. And the first thing, looking at this map, I wanted to know where the retention pond was. We saw where they extended it a little, but we get enough rain that I was flooded at one time. Um, and I, um, saying the reason with the safety with children, that area getting out of the gate, we have children riding their bikes, people walking for their help, and a lot of times I hold my breath sometimes because I can almost see an accident happen. And just out of safety issue alone, but then getting to that, uh, gate, I'm very much against that. Last year, I was up to after 2 o'clock AM with a helicopter over my head because somebody jumped the fence and got in Westlake. We don't need that to be that easy. And gate, open gates, even if they have a lock key, somebody can get that lock key. Just keep safety number one. Thank you all a lot.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else? Okay. I like a motion to accept or deny.
Mr. Chairman, you, you can allow the applicant to speak.
Say what?
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Yeah, yeah.
Will, actually. Did you, they removed the plan for a gated, like, into access, right?
That's correct.
All right. As far as the, what, what's identified as a, uh, massage parlor, that would have to be licensed as a massage parlor, you know, to do the massage parlor, correct?
Yeah, I mean, if you're do, so there is a distinction. If you're doing massage for purely medical reasons, then yeah, it doesn't, it's not included. But if you're doing massage for not medical reasons or medicinal reasons, however you want to say it, then yeah, you still have to get a massage operator's license. But yeah, you'd still have to get all of that, if that's what you're getting at.
Let, let's let him explain to us a little bit more about what they specifically are going to do with the massage.
Um, the way I understand it, it's not my business, um, but it's a very small portion of their business. Their medical facials, chemical peels, uh, they've been in Surrey Center for over ten years, I think. Um, massage is just one of their services, but it's a small amount of their business, i- if that makes sense. So I think the intent of massage parlor isn't being, probably this use wasn't what they were intending to stop.
But that would be done by licensing.
But, but she, she would have to get a business license is how I understand it, and if there's any issues at that.
So there, there's two different issues here, I think, guys. Um, so one of the things, you have a covenant that is on the property between the two property owners.
Right.
That is a separate issue from the Westlake Properties Association saying they're okay with the massage use. From Columbia County's standpoint, the two covenants that are between two property owners are between the two property owners. They can enforce them themselves if they so please. I believe Rafi has some opinion that it don't even exist anymore, but that's what, there's two different things at play. And you also have, you know, our requirements for massage are separate from all of that. Again, from our standpoint, this is, from what, what we've, what we've been told and heard so far, is a massage use require a conditional use if, if it wasn't its own PUD. That's why it's, that's why it's included with this, this application.
Right, but that has no bearing on the change to the PUD?
Yeah, it does.
Okay.
I mean, it's, it's part, it's one of the reasons why there, it's a major revision.
Okay, got you.
And, and just since the gate was mentioned, I can kind of address that really quickly. Um, a majority of this site is leased. Uh, we've had great, um, response and, and desire to be in it. Um, the pedestrian gate is, I don't have to put it there. We can wait and the residents can ask for it in the future and I'll allow it to happen. Um, it's not something that affects the rental rates. It doesn't affect, I think, the success of this development. I thought it was, um, a benefit to the neighborhood. If it's, if it's not, then it doesn't have to be in any request.
Not theirs?
Yeah.
Okay.
And it shouldn't, I'm a little bit confused in that this development has nothing really to do with the mangate going into Westlake. Did I say it doesn't?
It doesn't, no.
Not at all?
It, it has three different entrances on Furious Ferry.
Right.
There is one that can.
The actual entrance to Westlake is not affected by this.
Correct.
Okay. All right.
I do, I do have a question, but probably for Matt about the, the stormwater issue that was raised. They're, they're doing it underwater, that's, I forget what that thing's called. There, there is going to be stormwater control for all this asphalt, right?
Who, originally there was detention ponds, excuse me. Where detention ponds included, uh, Dr. Hamid Malik, who is a resident of Westlake, suggested they use the ten percent rule. Basically detention ponds detain and release water slowly. So everything upstream is doing the same thing. They're holding the rain and releasing it slowly. The idea, the ten percent rule is if you're closer to the discharge point of the creek, the stream, that you let your water go first, get it out of the way. So when all the upstream water's coming, you don't overflow. So in this case, the ten percent rule is engaged. Their engineers looked at it, they designed it, submitted it, they met our code, and, and that's how it was approved on the original one. With this one, they'll have to go through that whole process again. They'll have to bring us all new numbers, show us that it works. So again, this is a concept. We don't have engineering plans, we don't have topo, we don't have pipe sizes, we don't have any kind of runoff coefficient. So at this point, we can't give stormwater calculations because we don't have the final design.
Right.
Their engineer will have to do that. Their engineer will provide all that to us. We will then look through it, verify that we think it meets our standards, and if so, we'll approve the plan.
And before it's finally approved, you got to have all that?
Yes, sir, correct.
Good enough. We have a motion to accept or deny this issue.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to recommend approval with condition of file RZ twenty-three dash zero-six dash zero-six, major PUD revision to revise the site plan and add massage therapy and outdoor fitness uses, one thousand Westlake Commons Drive.
Have a second.
Second.
All in favor, signify with raising your right hand. Okay, Mrs. Montgomery.
Yes, sir, this is a minor revision to the existing S1 special zoning at two-eighty-five Flowing Wells Road. This is the location of the property on the west side of Flowing Wells Road. It is currently zoned S1 special for the Augusta Preparatory Today School. Its surrounding properties are primarily residential in nature. There are a couple other S1's around for, um, churches and a theater. This shows the aerial of the property, again, currently in use for the existing school. And the plat of the property. This shows the approximate location, um, of the batting cage that we're discussing tonight on the parcel. Um, it is kind of towards the northwest corner of the site, um, and is somewhat near the adjacent residences, uh, which you can see on the aerial, the existing, uh, trees there between the batting cage area and the homes. Shows the site photo, um, of the baseball field, looking kind of across to those, those trees we just mentioned. And this shows the existing batting cage on the site, essentially some, some chain link fence and some netting. Uh, it also shows the existing tree buffer to the south and north of that existing, uh, batting cage. Uh, the proposal with this request is to construct a permanent shelter for that batting cage. Uh, would be a wood post and beam structure, uh, with a, a metal or shingle roof. Uh, this would essentially allow batting practice to happen during inclement weather, um, or under low lighting conditions. They would be intending to have lighting under that roof, um, as well as netting around the, the structure to contain the baseballs. Shows the close-up of the concept plan for this structure. Again, essentially just putting this permanent cover in the, the same location as the existing batting cage. In terms of future development map, this is in the neighborhood's character area. Um, it is an existing private school, um, and civic uses such as schools and churches are permitted in this neighborhood's character area. Uh, this is replacement of a existing facility on the site. Um, this is very much in keeping with this character area. And staff is recommending approval with the condition that they minimize tree removal on the site. Uh, again, to keep that buffer between the batting cage and the, the adjacent homes. And that concludes the staff recommendation.
If anyone here would like to address this issue from, if I want to talk against it? Have any questions from us? Have a motion to accept or deny?
Chairman, I make a motion to approve with condition file RZ twenty-three dash zero-six dash zero-seven, minor S-dash-one revision to permit a covered batting cage at two-eighty-five Flowing Wells Road.
All in favor? Okay, next issue is Mr. Butler.
Senator Sherwood's request for a variance section nine S ninety-eight lists lot structure requirements at two-ten Meridian Drive, currently zoned C2 general commercial. Previous building setbacks for proposed canopy. This is the location of, of the property, again, at the intersection of Meridian Drive and Gateway Boulevard, within the Gateway Square development. This is the zone of the property and everything around it, zoned C2, is out of Gateway. Um, basically right next to the interstate, and potentially that has their own C2. This is aerial view of the property. This is using Chick-fil-A. And this is the existing site, this is the area that we're looking at tonight, is this little piece here. And this is the plat of the property. And the overall site plan, this shows the location of the proposed canopy that's here on the drawing. Uh, we actually saw a variance a few years ago on this side for this canopy here. Um, they are readjusting the overall site. If you go back to the aerial view, you can kind of see how it is currently where you had, where you come in here. You go straight across, you can block in all the, all the parking spaces there, if you like. With the revision, they are moving the, they are separating these two things apart and putting the drive-through on the south side here. So it has its own dedicated area, keeping the parking there as well. Um, and also with the doubling lanes, um, there is on, on the site itself. Uh, this should help to alleviate some of the issues they've had with back, with traffic backing out into Meridian Drive. I'm sure we're all aware that Chick-fil-A gets a lot of business. Um, and also the site itself is a little oddly shaped for most Chick-fil-A's. Um, and again, the canopy is there for, um, their employees to be able to deliver food, also, um, have protection from the elements during, uh, winter or summer. Uh, overall, uh, staff is, is recommending approval of the request. Again, the biggest thing is the, the change with the, uh, the way they're, the function of the drive-through. Um, that should be a, a good change to the site. Um, and also, the request for the canopy, the canopy is, is fairly intrusive, to be honest with you. But we have done a, a, um, alternate landscape plan to address any issues that could come from that on the, uh, it was, on, on the Gateway Boulevard side of things. Uh, will, it will, it will reduce the building setback down to five feet from the property line, which is a little out of character there, but again, it is for a canopy. Uh, staff is recommending approval of the request.
Anyone here who'd like to speak on behalf of this issue? All right.
Hey there, Eric Smith, two-ten Meridian Drive. I'm the franchisee of the restaurant. And just like the gentleman mentioned, this is really going to help alleviate the traffic concerns that exist in the parking lot. If there are any questions or concerns, I'd be happy to address them.
I got any questions? Yes, sir. Sit up at the same time.
On the design, I was coming up to discuss, just let you, all right, just, yeah. Uh, again, I'm Ryan O'Donnell with Hill Foley Rossi. Um, we did the design on this, so we, uh, I wanted to be up here to, if there's any questions from anybody up here, um, I feel that, Mr. Will Butler explained it pretty, pretty thoroughly. Chick-fil-A is a very community-based, uh, company, and they, they'll do everything they can for their community. So any traffic, pedestrian, um, teammate safety that they can mitigate or, or fix with this double canopy, they will do, and they will ultimately update and, uh, increase driving traffic in the site. But it's going to be included in the drive-through stalls now that we've got double lanes. The, uh, the dual lane around that site is about forty to fifty percent increase on stackable cars that won't be coming out into Meridian Drive. They'll be on the site, isolated in that isolated drive-through now, which allows those, those parking spaces at the, at the planned south, as discussed, to be open and be usable and not, you know, unusable spaces.
I got any questions?
That's, you're, you're adding an extra pickup lane.
Yeah, basically, yeah. It's a, it's a dual drive-through that's going to go.
Then back up between the current pickup and where they're taking the orders, it kind of, that's what pushes it back.
It's crazy busy.
Oh, yeah.
This is the standard for all Chick-fil-A's everywhere going forward, so you're going to see it, um, at any, in, any redeveloped Chick-fil-A.
Okay, thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Make a motion to accept or deny this issue.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to recommend approval of file VA two-three dash zero-six dash zero-five, variance to reduce the building setback along Gateway Boulevard to five feet for a drive-through canopy at two-ten Meridian Drive.
All in favor, signify with your right hand? Last item of the night. Butler.
Senator Sherwood's request for a couple of variances off Columbia Road, off Lewiston Road, and also one-twenty Lewiston Road, currently zoned C2 general commercial. Uh, combined property is eight-point-eight-three acres. Variance is sections nine S one-thirty-nine buffers and screening and nine, nine S one-forty-seven G-ten B use provisions, uh, to reduce structural buffers and to allow twenty-four hour, twenty-four hour operation of those convenience store gas pumps. This is the location of the properties that we're talking about this evening. Also, the current zoning of the property in the zone C2. Across the, across Columbia Road, you have plenty of development up here. You have, um, the R-one that's over here, I will talk about that in a minute, but that's owned by George Power. It's zoned R-one, but maybe not be used for that in the future. And again, across the street, you have more R-one, then you have an existing gas station right here, zoned C-one. This is aerial view of the site. And the existing site, again, Lewiston Road is currently under construction, so it's got a few, few open, open wounds, we'll say. And the plat of the properties in question. And also the plat of, uh, one, one of the properties, excuse me. So this is, this is the site plan. Again, we're dealing with Parkers, again, I, like the gentleman mentioned before, they are planning to build quite a few in the area. Uh, this is one of the proposed ones on the site itself. Uh, so again, you have the Parkers up here, uh, standard design that they've provided. Um, the issue is down here on this property line. Um, like I mentioned before, that is zoned R-one, so you have C2 against R-one, you have a thirty-foot structural buffer. Um, the issue becomes when you get down on the south side here. Um, with the, with the, um, excuse me, the lining of Lewiston Road, you're going to have a median that is basically here. Um, the cut for that is further down, um, basically here. So they cannot move their entrance out of that thirty-foot buffer. A buffer cannot have an entrance within it, can't have a driveway within it. So they are stuck with, this is the only place they can put a full access entrance, uh, to the property off Lewiston Road. And they have the one up here, um, that's R, that would be put in place. So they are proposing, uh, to have a, to have the structural component here, and then it transfers over into having planted in this area. Then basically, once you hit this point here, it is back to being a thirty-foot structural buffer overall. Again, the property next door is zoned by George Power. Uh, George Power is not to comply with zoning regulations, that's why it's zoned R-one. Um, they have a few properties that are zoned correctly, but again, they don't have to comply with any of that. So the property while being zoned R-one is not really functioning R-one. So a reduction there makes some sense. Again, also with GDOT requiring them to, or having the, the only entrance be there as well. There's some, some good reasoning to reduce the buffer in this situation. Uh, the next part of that is a reduction in twenty-four hour operation, or the allowance of twenty-four hour operation, excuse me. Again, with that, usually what we're looking for is how does lighting and noise, how does it impact adjacent properties? Again, this is George Power, property across the street is already zoned commercial. You have an existing gas station here. Really, the only impacts are this area over here. Uh, because of that, we do have a condition, kind of like we, like we, I recommended before, uh, speaking to, um, like on the site being shielded and directed, directed away. Uh, we are giving them some leeway to kind of tell us how they're going to do that. Again, it is a, a good ways away. There is a road right across, or a road that's to take into account there. Uh, but again, that specific parcel is the one that we're looking at to not allow it to impact. Again, staff is urging approval with that condition, that includes staff recommendation.
Have someone who'd like to step forward on behalf of this issue?
Cody Rogers, EMC Engineering, twelve-eleven Merchant Way, Statesboro, Georgia. Uh, Mr. Butler outlined both those issues very well. Just want to reiterate that the buffer variance is simply because of working with GDOT and their, uh, their project on Lewiston Road. And as he outlined, the property owner to the south and to the east is George Power. And, uh, even though it's R-one, it's not functioning as a residential use. So we'd like to have the opportunity again, hear the concerns from the community and come up here and address those concerns afterwards.
Any questions? Thanks, sir. Anyone opposed to this issue? Come forward, ma'am.
Good evening, my name is Beth Cornell. I live at twenty-five thirty-eight Falling Branch Lane in Evans. Um, I am opposed to the, the variance requested by Parkers. Um, my first general comment is these ordinances of our county, these are the minimum standards, the lowest common denominator in our county. And we should be very careful when we grant variances, especially if a request is to completely do away with whatever the, the ordinance requires. My question for this challenge for this group is especially, why do we, why do we want to allow variances for multimillion-dollar corporations? We should protect what was put in here for the citizens of our county. Um, this is not a small business that's going in here, so there's not a, a homegrown felt feeling for here. Um, a variance should be something that is, is a small piece of it. So for example, I am not going to speak out against the variance for the road. They're coming slightly down there, it's a small piece of it. To me, I think a variance is in there to allow for small exceptions. However, the variance on the twenty-four-seven operation, we're proposing to just completely do away with it. He's not out, they're not asking for, let me, oh, stay open an hour later, let me start, come open an hour earlier. To me, that's a variance, that's not being asked here. Um, the area around here, you do have a residence, uh, you do have a church across the road, you also have.
Residence belongs to the people who sell on the property.
Okay, there's, I did not realize that. There is a residence over there, there's also another gas station, there's a church. Um, I know a lot of the emphasis here was on light pollution, and there were solutions for that. It stated in there that the, um, that the lighting shielding should help lower any negative effects from this. It doesn't say it would eliminate it. It doesn't say it would eliminate it. It didn't really speak to anything on the noise piece of it. And also, it's been mentioned before about crime. I know it was a mention about the fact that you mentioned you had a business that was next to a 24/7 operation, but you don't live there all the time. There is a church across the road, a very old church, got a very old cemetery. You know, there's 24/7 operation, when you bring it closer into, into the residential areas, I'm fine with it up at the interstate, but not as we get closer to our neighborhoods. There are no other 24/7 operations nearby that are large enough to support the need for a 24/7 gas station at this location, convenience store. If somebody wants to, they can go the two miles up to the interstate, and I believe that there are some 24/7 there.
Yeah, I live over there. I'm going over there if I ain't got to.
Yeah. It's.
And there again, my cause for concern about crime, that's why I ask. I live right down the road from this. If this is going to be a crime problem, I'm obviously not going to support it, but I just don't feel that that's an issue in this part of town.
May or may not be, but I don't know if there's been studies about it. I do know that when the fair is in town, there's an increase of problems with break-ins and vandalism along Magnolia Lane. Magnolia Lane residents have been complaining about that for years. You have a transient group of people that are at the fairgrounds that are there 24/7, and they do see an increase.
Well, there wouldn't be a transient group at this place of business, there's people that are going to do a specific thing, like get fuel or something they need.
There may be, but I also know that.
Look at the food line right across the street, it's, it's lights all the time.
Yes, but it's also not open 24/7. It closes.
But it's lit all the time.
But it also is, and I understand that. But the more that we continue to change our ordinances and allow groups to do this, I will quote off of the variance request. It says, "Special circumstances and conditions are such, the strict application of the provisions of this chapter would deprive the applicant of any reasonable use of his land. Mere loss in value shall not justify a variance. There must be deprivation of beneficial use of land." Parkers can still operate within the original ordinances of our county. We're not saying they can't. Lewiston Express has operated for years, being closed between, I think it's 11:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m.
They never requested anything in the difference.
But they've also been able to have a good financial future, a big good financial success at that location. If they hadn't, they would have closed. You know, the, the conditions that were given was that this was be a deprivation of the residents of Columbia County, if they're not allowed to be open 24/7. I live in that area. I'm not deprived because there are not a 24/7 convenience store close by.
What time do you leave to go hunting in the morning?
Excuse me?
What time do you leave to go hunting in the morning?
I go hunt, duck hunting with my son. We leave about 4:00 o'clock in the morning.
Yeah, I like to stop by and get a cup of joe and a donut.
I get it at my home, where I go.
Let's get this issue going, let's go have what you want to say.
My request is that county ordinance should be upheld. They should not be constantly giving variances to. I have stood in front of this group, I've lived in the county since 1980. I attend these meetings, I speak at these meetings, and more times than once, I have been told that there's an ordinance when we've requested something better or something bigger, that the ordinance didn't require it. But now I hear the same exact thing being spoken to me that, well, in this case, the ordinance does require, oh, but we're going to grant a variance for it.
I agree with you, I agree to a certain point about variances, but this is a minor variance compared to something we had to sit here and listen to, I assure you.
Operating 24/7 is not, because what happens is you set the precedent here, and it continues to flow down the road. And that's where the problem is. When is it, where is it going to stop? I got a Freedom of Information request that pulled the variances, and how many were approved and disapproved, and it's not a great record. So many of them are approved in this county. We should be much more selective. Like I said, I am all for a small one, like the road, that doesn't bother me. We should be flexible in that. I would even be more willing to help a small business, but a multimillion dollar corporation, he wants to not operate.
Ma'am, how are you going to pick and choose doing that? You've got to do it one way or the other. You're saying you'd help a small business and wouldn't help a big business, that's not good. What difference does that make?
Then my question is, then why do we just give variances to everybody? These are county ordinances. These are the only things to protect the citizens of our county, and we just say, it's okay.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Okay. Any more questions?
Another request for, I'm Carol Bukey, I live on Hurford Farm Road, right down from this development. My understanding was there's supposed to be a, a service station, Parkers built up around Williamview Parkway at Columbia Road. Did that get approved or denied, or?
That's not a Parker's.
That's not a Parker's.
No, ma'am.
So that's a circle K. It hasn't gone to the board commissioners, it'll go on July 18th.
That's another service station.
Sure.
Right up the road there. So my point is, okay, this seems to be a pretty good looking service station. You know, this is a Parker's, right? This one we're here, we're talking about.
Yes.
So, I mean, we're going to have a, an application for a circle K right up the road, and then we got this one here. Do we really need that many service stations? Again, you got the interstate, still have a little service station right across the road here, this one here. So that's my comment. Do we need this many service stations?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay. We have, need a motion to accept or deny this issue?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to recommend approval with condition of file VA 23-06-08, variances to modify the buffer and permit 24-hour operation of a proposed convenience store for properties off Columbia Road and Lewiston Road.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by raising your right hands. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Whoa, 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 whoa.
A few things.
Have commissioner comments and then public comment.